I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's January 6, 2021. Happy New Year, everyone, and we'll begin with our public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll begin with the next item, item three, the election of officers.
Yes, I wish to nominate Julie Thomas to remain as president of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners and Lee Jones as the vice president.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, and a second, and thank you for entrusting me. And I cannot thank my colleagues enough for being an amazing team through 2020. And I look forward to defeating COVID in 2021 and getting our other work done as well. So, thank you all. Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Cockrell.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you all so much, and we will move on to department updates. And we begin, speaking of COVID, with Ms. Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Then, thank you all for serving our community again. It's been very good to have such support and partnerships all across the community. So, thank you very much for your leadership, and we look forward to improvements, just as you said. So, I will kind of focus on that despite that we're staying in orange this week. Not seeing a lot of movement, but we're not getting worse. So, there's something to be said for that. There is some changes happening, but we're still staying in orange. The testing sites information optimum, as I've said before, is secured through the state through January. They have not indicated if they will continue those sites past that at this time, but those are on a month-to-month basis. So, we'll wait and see as we get further into the month. The Morton Street Community Site is open. They have available appointments, and we want to encourage people to also utilize that site. It is still best and quickest if you can pre-register and complete that registration, make your appointment and fully complete the registration, but they do accept walk-ins as well. And they have started doing some rapid testing. Now, the rapid testing is from the State Department of Health, and there is some criteria. People do need to be symptomatic. So, we have a criteria checklist, and there are limited supplies. But if you are symptomatic and think that you may have been exposed, I would encourage you to use that community site. You can schedule your appointment and go in and hopefully you will meet that criteria. If you are symptomatic, then you'll be able to get a rapid test, which will give you results in less than 30 minutes. So, we would encourage you to do that so that if you are positive, that you know that you need to isolate and you're not, you know, wondering what to do in the meantime while you're waiting for test results. We've also, we've been following up those tests with PCRs if they're negative. And so far, the site manager has indicated that the By Next Now tests that have been negative on people who are symptomatic, their PCR has also been negative. So, we feel very good about the results that we are getting on those rapid tests. So, just wanted to share that information. And as we move forward, we know that we do need to continue to wear masks. And one of the reasons that our local health order and the state's health order is kind of ongoing is that we know that we need to continue mask-wearing and physical distancing for a time yet. We are not out of the woods because vaccine is coming, but we need to continue our prevention measures in order to slow the spread of the infection while we are getting vaccine out as well. So, IU Health and hospitals have been vaccinating frontline healthcare workers. Those groups have been expanding in small groups because vaccine is limited. There is not an abundant supply at this time, but it is coming, and it's coming in, and it is going into arms. So, that's what people need to know. Be patient. We will get to you. We are excited that people are interested, and they're wanting to know when they can get their vaccine. So, please, please, please be patient. We will let you know when you are eligible, and we'll use a variety of means to do that, and we'll make test vaccine available to you as quickly as we can. We have been told we are to receive our first shipment of vaccine this week to start vaccinations next week. Again, at this time, the group is the same. It's still frontline healthcare workers, first responders. That has not changed as of this moment. We're expecting any time to know who to add to that group. That could be announced today during the governor's press conference, but we have not been given the next group. And I know that early on, there's lots of talk about the phases, phase one, one A, one B, all of that. And I think I've said this before, but Dr. Lindsay Weaver with the State Department of Health is trying really to get people to kind of step out of that rigid box about those phases because vaccine is limited, and they are looking at how much vaccine is available, where it needs to go, because we have different types of vaccine as well, and what's the risk to individuals? So, they do have a committee who's looking at that, and they will add groups, most likely small groups, at a time because vaccine is limited. We originally, we had no idea how much vaccine we might get, and at first, we thought we may only get 100 doses. We are now supposed to get between 400 and 600 a week for the next few weeks. We won't know exactly what we're getting until it's sent, but that's the plan. That's what our hours will be based on and so forth. So, when people get the link, and right now, what happens is you are invited, you are told that you are eligible for the vaccine because you work in healthcare, for example, you're frontline, you're working with patients, or you're first responder, for example, maybe you're law enforcement, and you're in the field. If you're law enforcement and you're in the office, then your time will come, but it's not quite there yet either. But as those groups come eligible, they will receive notice, and that will include a link for them to schedule an appointment. And when they get that link, they'll be able to schedule that at any of the vaccine clinics that are currently set up in their area. So, they may go to IU Health, to the hospital site, starting next week. They might come to our site, or perhaps they might live in another adjoining county, and they may go to a site there. So, there's a little bit of leeway for them to do that. But as people get the link, they can schedule that appointment. And so, that's what people need to know is that as these groups expand, they will be given information or an invitation, and we will share information on how that may change as we go through these groups. So, you know, right now, it's fairly easy to reach healthcare providers or first responders. And as we get more public, it will get more difficult, more challenging. But we are working on ways to do that. The state is working on ways to do that, and we will share that information as soon as we have it. We just don't have it at this time. So, stay tuned. Watch the media. We have our Friday press conferences. We will announce it during these meetings, and we, sorry about that. We will also use social media. We will use every avenue that we can to get the information out. The state does have a vaccine website, so I would encourage people to watch that. It will tell you how much vaccine is going out. It will tell you who's eligible for vaccine and those sorts of things. So, encourage you to watch that. Watch our webpage. Watch social media. And just know that we will share that information with you as soon as we have it. Be patient, be kind. As we start vaccine next week, we are, we're not scheduled to even be trained on the registration process and all of that until Friday. So, if you can imagine if we start to open sometime on Monday, and we're not even going to get training for the platform until Friday, Monday is going to be a pretty chaotic day for us. So, just be patient, be kind. We will work through all of those things and get people vaccinated as quickly as we can, and we look forward to doing that. So, as our public health nurse said last night, you know, we've been doing this for, you know, a long time now, working very long days, and she said that she has never been happier to work long, you know, 12-hour days to see the light at the end of the tunnel. So, we are preparing to get everybody vaccinated that wants to be vaccinated. Just again, be patient, pay, stay tuned, and we will share when your time is up.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that our local health department has been preparing to get the vaccines distributed for, I think, at least months and is very ready, very organized. Any problem, any slow-up and problems or anything like that are coming more from the federal and the state level than they are locally. Locally, we're all ready to go. Thank you, Penny and your whole department.
Christina and the whole team have been doing fabulous job. And of course, we've had plans, you know, in general for years, but every situation is different and calls for different plans. And as I was talking to somebody the other day, you know, we have different plans for different situations and different amounts of vaccine. If we were only getting 100 doses, where we are and what our hours are look very different than if we're getting, you know, 500 or 5,000. All of those things will change where we might be, what that site might look like, how many volunteers we need. And I do want to say thank you. We have added over 200 volunteers this year to our medical reserve corps. Yeah.
That's great. Commissioner Githens?
I just wanted to compliment Ms. Cottle. I sent this on to the rest of you also, but on Monday, the Indiana State Department of Health released videos that were done on harm reduction. And the collaboration that goes on here with the Indiana Recovery Alliance is just phenomenal. And the fact that Ms. Cottle shows such compassion for every individual in our community is just, oh, kudos.
Thank you. You know, the Greater Health Foundation of Indianapolis, and I always want to rearrange their name somehow, but that's on the agenda today. We get funding from them, and that is who put that video together. So, we were very, very pleased to be a part of that.
Yeah, let's be sure to post that on Facebook, that video on our Facebook. Yeah, it's amazing work, and I think that's the key point, is what Commissioner Jones said. And as Ms. Cottle pointed out, we are ready, and we can't help what number of doses we get. We can't help the lack of specific information for targeting populations. We're ready, and I hope Monroe County residents take heart. We are prepared for whatever they can give us. We're ready. And I think that's the important message to get out to everyone, but we don't have the vaccine yet to the numbers of, to match the numbers of people who are interested. And it's great that so many people are interested. I think that says a lot about our local communication efforts. We are, we have a lot of folks who are interested and eager, and that's fabulous. But we just have to be patient and wait for the right time. But we are set and ready, and that's something that's an important message to get out. So, thank you to everyone who made that possible. Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. And with that, we will turn to emergency management. Ms. Moore, good morning.
Good. Good morning. Good morning. Great things are happening, aren't they? We've just continued and continued, and now we're in this new year, and we're just going to continue some more. We have two blood drives scheduled for January. We actually have blood drive scheduled out through March, but I'm just going to announce them each month as they get closer and closer, so people won't get confused on the dates. We have a drive scheduled on the 21st from 10:00 to 3:00, and another drive scheduled on the 28th from 2:00 to 7:00. Both of those drives and all of our drives that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners is sponsoring and supporting is going to be at the Monroe County Convention Center, and we register for a time slot, and those can be made at the redcross.org website. So, we did come in third in the state for the amount of blood that was collected at our site for the 2020 year. And now, we're starting these drives. We came in third, but we didn't start our drives until COVID started, and we had such a need for blood. And then, it took a little bit to get those drives started. So, we actually didn't have our first drive until, you know, a good few months into that 2020 year. So, our goal is to strive to even be better and greater this year. So, thank you to all those residents that made appointments. Thank you to all those individuals that can donate. We couldn't have such a success if we weren't in it together. So, thank you for that. Since we've last met, we've had two travel advisories that have gone up. Those, of course, are when our road conditions are at a place where our highway trucks need to come out. There's three levels. Just very quickly, there's the advisory that we usually go ahead and put in advisory anytime our trucks have to start going out, and they do a full call-out. And then, there's the warning. That's when things are super slick, and that is when we, so the advisory, let me back up, is just to let people know it's potentially slick. The trucks are out. Please let them do their jobs. If you can stay home, we would greatly appreciate it. The warning indicates that you can only go to and from work to pick up medicine, to go to a doctor's visit. And if not, we encourage you to stay home. And then, the last is the watch where we would implement a watch and say that you cannot be on the roads. And if you are, and then it's not for an emergency, then you could in fact be ticketed from local law enforcement. So, we continue to monitor the weather. We put those advisories out. We put those out through our Monroe County Alert System. And so, if you have not signed up for those, for that, I would encourage you to do so at the county website. Click on the megaphone and get signed up for that. We continue to have more and more individuals sign up through that system, and it's a wonderful free service. We have also continued to work with our Health Department on just getting prepared for the vaccine. We've had several calls, and we're doing, again, like everyone has reiterated, everything we can to be the best prepared. We're trying to be as proactive, even though we don't have a lot of answers, and think about everything that could possibly happen, to be prepared so that when we do have it, we will be able to serve and get it out as quickly and efficiently as we can. And then, lastly, for 2021, our office has decided to have a target item each month that we are just targeting and sending out preparedness for our community. So, in January, we have selected heater safety. And so, on our website today, later today, we'll be putting out some heater safety information. We've created a flyer, and I will submit it with our next commissioners' meeting so that we can advertise various heater safety and various things to do. And not just space heaters, but cleaning chimneys and various other things that sometimes we often forget about. And so, as the year goes on, each month, we will have something different that we are targeting. We've got that calendar already prepared, and several different places have advertisements, social media posts, and various things we can get from FEMA. And so, we're working closely with them, and then we will be sharing that information with all of our partners and getting information out into the hands of our public, and that way, we can both most be prepared. So, that's my report for today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. We'll turn now for comments, questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just think it's a wonderful idea having this project as a month. I'll certainly be watching for it and whatever information you're able to give us. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, congratulations on the blood drives. Great, great work. Means a lot to people in our community.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will add to that, to encourage folks to sign up for the Resident Alert System, that's also where you will find information on any new health orders or anything else, other information that comes out. Some of our water companies are also tied into that to issue boil alerts. So, please sign up. It will be a great help once we get into spring as well with severe weather. So, just pay, it's a good thing to have so you don't have to monitor the web every minute that you think something's coming up. You will be notified right away as a resident. So, please use that system. It's a great system, and we appreciate that. So, thank you so much, Ms. Moore, and we will now turn to Ms. Ridge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. Happy New Year to you guys. So, I don't have a lot to report. Of course, we did have a couple of snow events over the holidays, and even though they're small events, they cost our department. So, you know, roughly cost us a little over $45,000 just for those two little small snow events that happened on the 18th and the 31st. But kudos to Toby and the guys out there. They're the ones that are out driving the streets overnight, reporting back, working with the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management, to let them know what the road conditions are and work together. So, it's great collaboration and always want our guys to be safe out there on the roads. But I really don't have anything else other than that. Getting ready for the next round for community crossings, we will be submitting two bridges, and I believe another paving project. So, yeah, we're just busy trying to keep going, and it doesn't seem like construction season has slowed down, really. So.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I was, I've been wondering, with the somewhat warmer weather this winter, has it been possible for the asphalt plants to be open more? Or do they just close down for the winter once it starts to get cold?
They close down for the winter, one, to do any necessary repairs to their equipment during the winter months. And then, also, you have such a temperature change. So, when it's the hot asphalt, you can only put that down during certain temperatures. So, to get a plant up and running and to make asphalt would not be feasible, even if it was just for one warm day. So, that's why they use the cold patch throughout the winter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Githens?
Didn't you just apply for a community crossing grants last month again? I mean, this is incredible.
Well, they ran late. They do it two times a year right now. So, they, with the pandemic, it was supposed to be a July call, but they made it an October call, and then they awarded those in the first of December. So, now, they're trying to get back on track and doing a January call and a July call. So, we wanted to try and stay caught up because it's, you know, a little bit of paperwork to get together to get those resubmitted, but we kind of knew what we were going to submit in this call, so we held those off to get those other paving projects. And I think we did that lot due to timing and bids. It's better for us to get the paving projects out to bid so that we can get those into, vendors are the low bidder, the contractors into their schedules, whoever that low bidder is. So, it's typically better to get those bids out in the winter, early spring, before everybody starts doing their schedule and the prices go up. So, that's kind of what we geared for, and that's kind of what we planned for on these two calls.
That's great. Great work, and a good reminder, based on what Ms. Moore talked about with travel advisories, just a reminder that roads will, bridges will ice over before roads do. And so, when the temperature drops like that and there's any precipitation on the roadways, just be careful and look out for the crews when they're out. That's important to know when they're out and to be careful around them.
Absolutely. And the last summer, when Toby and his team took over, and this year, they do a lot more of pre-treating, and we really feel like that that has really helped with our staying up, staying on top of things a little bit better than in the past. Of course, we haven't had a huge snowstorm, knock on wood, and hopefully, we won't. But they just, they try and stay prepared and stay ahead of the game. So, it's worked out quite well for us so far.
Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. We appreciate that. And now, it is time for us to, well, let's see first if there are any other department heads that have an update for us. Sometimes, we see one in there. I don't see anyone. Doesn't look like we have any departments that are here for an update. So, let's turn it over to public comments. This would be for items that are not on our agenda. We have one, Henry. Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Commerce. Here again this morning to remind you and the public that court-appointed special advocates still need people to volunteer to advocate for children who are in the juvenile justice system because they've been abused or neglected. We will have a training for new volunteers in just about a month. It'll be February 9th through March 3rd. Applications will be due in just about two weeks. So, please consider that out there. If you know people who you think would be a good CASA, alert them that this training is going to happen. They can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link. You can get a bunch more information. They can also fill out the application or download it and fill it out by hand and mail it in or email it in. It's a wonderful volunteer opportunity. It's hard work, but it can be very fulfilling. I just had two children get adopted after being in the system, literally, for four and a half years. And now, they're in a forever home with a couple that has been just terrific in dealing with all their issues that result from that kind of four and a half years. So, it's a good time to volunteer. The next training won't be till June, so it'll be kind of hot then. So, this would be a good time. It will be done by Zoom. It'll be on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays from 5:30 to 8:30. Then Judge Galvin and Judge Harvey would swear you in, and we've got cases waiting for CASA right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shelton. We appreciate that. Looks like we have another hand raised for a public comment. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, commissioners. And again, thank you for all the great work you're doing, as well as Penny and Allison on the COVID-19 response. I appreciate everything you do. My name is David Henry. I live in Van Buren Township. And today, I'm here to ask the commissioners to consider declaring in law what seems to exist in fact in our community, that we have a state of emergency when it comes to our neighbors experiencing homelessness in the encampments in downtown Bloomington. As you all know, Indiana Code empowers your level of government to manage disaster through emergency management, and that's civilian-led, brings our whole community, public, private, nonprofit, formal and spontaneous volunteers together to respond and recover from a disaster. It's my belief that we're witnessing in real time a disaster when it comes to encampment clearings. And as we all know, neighbors experiencing homelessness is not a crime. I teach emergency management at IU, and I think some of you know that. I also consult to FEMA and dozens of EM agencies around the country. And what we know when it comes to disaster is that hazards like a tornado are not in our control, but our choices about those hazards make disasters happen. So, it is in that case, when I look at the encampments in the community, it's not just the choice about people that worsen the day-to-day disaster of economic justice here. It's also the pandemic. It's also the public health disaster of needle sharing and lack of safe consumption spaces that have generate that state of emergency. In short, disasters create other disasters, and this is why the CDC is. And this is why the CDC, as we know, has guidance to leave the encampments alone, that people are safer in encampments and open air spaces than they are being driven into certain shelters against choice. So I see this as two disasters that have happened here, which really puts it in your plates to consider as for a disaster declaration. Back in 2018, I worked with the city of Minneapolis on an encampment of about 300 people along a highway. And it was the Emergency Management Agency of the community, not law enforcement, that brought stakeholders together to identify all the resources all together at the table to house people according to their needs. And as you know, the city doesn't have that agency. No one at the city is trained or well-practiced in the science of emergency management for long-term recovery and community resilience. That resides at your level. So at Seminary Square and why I'm here today, I see a lot of resource mismanagement. Folks dropping off stuff, tents, supplies, harm reduction tools that we know are going to end up being cleared in a few days. And that churning of resource mismanagement and misallocation and not knowing where all the resources are in the community is what really drove me here to talk to you all. So it's my belief that we can disrupt the cycle through a state of emergency declaration to bring it up to the county level where the whole community, township, city, spontaneous volunteers, mass sheltering like the Red Cross can address the compounded problem of homelessness during a pandemic and COVID-19 response. I believe you can disrupt that cycle of wasted effort and and address the disaster. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments and your input. We'll take that under advisement. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer a public comment for an item not on our agenda? There are no other hands raised. Okay. Thank you so much Ms. Dayton. And let's move on to item six on our agenda, please.
Move approval of the minutes for December 16th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Comments, edits, corrections? No. Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes, December 16th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. And move on to item seven, please.
Move approval of the claim stacket accounts payable, January 6th, 2021, and payroll, December 30th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second and the disparate dates are due to the holidays when the Commissioners did not meet. Good morning, Mr. Miller. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Commissioners and Happy New Year. As you likely noticed, there was a very large claim docket totaling $91,133,147.85. The majority of that was for settlement distribution, which was $85,795,168.48. There were about four other larger items that are certainly worth mentioning, starting with Highland for business insurance and the amount of $818,570. Next would be $489,237.12 for Anthem for December claims and fees, followed by $484,101.58 for Akar Financial Corporation, which was to pay off a lease for truck and heavy equipment, highway-related items. Finally, $405,947.50 was for Convention and Visitors Bureau for first quarter operational funds. And as far as payroll is concerned, the total was $1,558,743.6. $1,086,235.92 was for the main and supplemental payrolls. And the remaining $471,838.44 were for all payroll-related AP claim items.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Okay.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, just seeing the the total on the the claims just kind of made me gasp at first.
Typical end-of-the-year sticker shock. Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand by going to the bottom of the Zoom screen and indicating you have a comment. Are no hands raised? Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the claim stock at accounts payable, January 6th, 2021, and payroll from December 30th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Item eight, I will report, I will note that we have reports from three entities. We have received reports from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for November of 2020, from the Treasurer from November 2020, and Waits and Measures report from November 16th to December 15th of 2020. And with that, we will move on to new business item nine A, please.
Move to approve a program partnership agreement with Monroe County and City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. Rice.
Good morning.
Morning.
So this is a pretty simple agreement. It's essentially to allow the city and the county Human Rights Commissions to work together towards education, advocacy, outreach. We will maintain our separate Human Rights Commissions, but we thought, and I've talked with Barbara McKinney at the City of Bloomington, who is an attorney who handles their human rights matters. And she's already talked to her commission and they're supportive of this. We thought we could have some efficiencies when speaking to the public and perhaps have some combined website and outreach. We find that a lot of people get confused whether they live in the city or the county. I often get calls that are for the city. She gets calls from people who are in the county. And so we thought we would try to collaborate in 2021 and see if we can do a better job of really essentially community education. And there's no cost involved. It's just free and it's just a way to partner together. So I hope you'll support it and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
It seems that this really should improve efficiency quite a bit and be pretty beneficial for the community. Thank you for making it happen.
Commissioner Giffens?
You're muted. Yeah. I like the fact that you were developing a common form for people to use. I think that'll also cut down on some frustration for folks.
No, absolutely. The one question I have is sort of a technicality question. Are there any, we all know that City of Bloomington residents are Monroe County residents, but are there any parts of Monroe County that are not included in this?
Yes, that's a great question. And and we do not include the incorporated town of Ellisville or Steinsville. And I did reach out to the attorney for Ellisville and I've reached out to Steinsville, member of the town council, just to see if they would be interested in the county, including them in our ordinance. And so far we've had no takers, but obviously, you know, if that changes, I will let you know.
That's great. So we just want to ensure that residents of Ellisville and Steinsville know that the invitation's been made and the invitation stands. And if you are interested, please contact your town councillor and let them know. We're ready to help. That's great. All right. So let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Just go to the bottom of the Zoom screen and click on raise hand. Are no hands raised? Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve the program partnership agreement between Monroe County and City of Bloomington, the Human Rights Commissions?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification with Indiana Department of Health. Fund name epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases. Fund number 8107, in the amount of $120,960.
Exactly. We, all right, we have a motion and we have a second. Sorry, I stepped on your toes there, Commissioner Giffens. Ms. Cottle?
Good morning again. So this is actually funding that we are receiving for COVID-19 vaccination clinic work. And it is in the amount, as you said, of $120,960. It's a kind of part of our immunization grant, so it's an amendment to that, I I believe. And so we're, we're happy to have these additional funds to provide vaccination services.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
About it.
Commissioner Giffens?
I did have one question. It says that the grant agreement shall terminate June 30th of 2021. What happens if not everybody is vaccinated by that date?
Well, this is an amendment to our immunization grant, part of the vaccine for children, but it's a different pot of money that's been put into the same grant. But the grant period is actually July through June. And so that's why this expires at the end of June. If, if we are still doing vaccination clinics, then hopefully, and hopefully anyway, there will be additional vaccine funds that may come. They may come from other sources or they may, the state could hold them and provide those funds in a new grant cycle.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is just part of a grant cycle that federally ends at the end of June.
Right. Thank you so much. And we know that the funding has already been called for, allocated, needed and planned for. So we are all set on that end of it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Again, just go to the bottom of the Zoom screen and click on raise hands. Are no hands raised? Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll to ratify the Indiana Department of Health lab capacity infectious disease grant?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Cassidy Electric Contractors Incorporated retainer agreement.
Oh, we, item C.
Did I skip one? Sorry. Move to approve ratification of the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis Agreement. Fund name syringe services, fund number 3130, in the amount of $25,000.
Second. Right. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Cottle?
Yes, this is our fund 9130 and it's a syringe service program. I mentioned earlier, we've received these funds from the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis since 2015, when we started our syringe service program. And the amount has ranged from $10,000 to this year, the $25,000. So we are extremely grateful to them to provide these funds that are less restricted than the state funds are. So we can use these for actual syringes or for insurance or for other supplies that this syringe program may need.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I really appreciate the fact that we have a mobile unit that goes out to where people are so that if they do not have transportation, we are, we are finding them. And that you've actually got, well, I guess the Indiana Recovery Alliance actually puts a calendar up that shows people where they're going to be on different days. And so that, that's really unique also in terms of what happens in Monroe County.
Yes.
Absolutely. And it's great to have this increase in funding as well. I'm sure it will, it is needed as always, but it will be put to great use. So we appreciate that effort to get additional funds and the great work of the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis. So let's see if there are any, if there's any public comment on this item. Then raise your hand in the Zoom screen. Are no hands raised? All right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll to ratify the agreement with the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
I move to approve Cassidy Electric Contractors Incorporated retainer agreement.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Robertson from Parks and Recreation.
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
So back in December, the Park Board approved a retainer agreement with Cassidy Electrical Contractors. This retainer agreement is intended for smaller electrical projects, emergency situations. It'll allow us to respond quickly to those situations. So a couple of things that come to mind are athletic lights, security lights in the park, restroom lights, things like that. It's a two-year agreement. As you can see, it expires in 2022 and it's not to exceed $15,000. So any sort of bigger project over that amount, obviously, we would go to the, the Park Board for approval and then present to the Commissioners. So if there are any questions related to the agreement, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, I think this is good planning on the part of the Parks Department.
I just have a question perhaps for legal or Mr. Robertson about whether the not to exceed is per project or for the entirety of the grant?
That, that would be for the entirety of the contract. So over the, over the course of, over the course of the last couple of years, we've, our projects with them have ranged anywhere from $500 to to $5,000. They don't happen that frequently, so we're hoping that over the course of two years, we can stay under $15,000.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much for that clarification. Yeah, I have grants all over my brain and so I said the wrong thing. Thank you. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. Are no hands raised? Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement, retainer agreement with Cassidy Electric Contractors?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And let's move on to item E, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-03, Parks Surplus Property.
Second. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the pictures for it.
We have a motion and we have a second. It's hard to get back into the swing of things, I'm finding today. All right. Mr. Robertson, will you please tell us about this?
Yes. So again, back in December, the Park Board voted to surplus several different park equipment items. So we've got a, a roller, a pump-operated fertilizer sprayer, a pole behind fertilizer tank and sprayer, and a generator. All of these items are, are old, to say the least. Some of them, most of them don't, don't get used very often. So we're, we're looking to surplus them. And again, fairly straightforward, but it's just, it's outdated equipment.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, that it certainly did look like all of those items were pretty old.
They're, they're old and they have been used in the past, but their, their time has come. They're old and they have been used in the past, but their time has come.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I saw the picture of the generator, I thought that generator is older than John is.
Oh, I, we're not sure quite how old it is, but I would, if I were a betting man, I'd say yes, it's probably older than I am.
See if there's any public comment on this item. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens? Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve proposed claims for Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant for COVID-19 expenses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have the always energetic Ms. Prihan Gregory from the Auditor's Office joining us. Tell us about this, please.
Sorry, struggling to unmute. Good morning, Commissioners. So today, I am asking for approval of $90,515.67 worth of support for local businesses and taxing units for COVID-19-related expenses. And just to give a little bit of background to the public, this is the continuation of our CARES dollars at work. The county received a $4.7 million allocation of, from the government, just for COVID-related expenses. And we are, thanks to you, sharing this with the local community to aid with expenses. So with your approval, that $90,000 will go to local businesses today to support them.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just so happy that we could work with the council to make this happen. Hopefully, it will help to mitigate the economic damage that COVID is creating.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, when I saw the list of the different organizations, businesses that have been receiving money, wow, it's spread all across the community. This is important.
Yeah, it really is phenomenal, and I agree with my colleagues, and so glad that we could work with the council on putting this together to create this kind of fund to help our taxing units that did not receive CARES money directly. But also, so many of our area businesses, we want to make sure that we have a vital economy once this pandemic's over. And this is just one way that we've helped to create that possibility. So appreciate all the work that's gone into this, especially on the side of Auditor's Office and the Grants Administrator, to get this process running smoothly. And right at the first of the year here, we're already releasing more funds, which is a great sign that people have been working through the holiday because on behalf of our businesses and social service organizations and our taxing units. So excellent work all around. With that, let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There's one, Henry.
All right. Looks like Mr. Shelton. Good morning again.
Good morning again, Commissioners. On behalf of the chamber, speaking on behalf of the business community, we certainly want to thank you for, I think, this very wise investment. I agree totally, Commissioner Thomas, that we want to have a vital economy when this thing is finally tamed, and this will certainly help that. It's been very, very, very much appreciated by the businesses. So thank you very much.
Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. See if there are any other members of the public who wish to offer comment. Again, just go to the bottom of the screen and click on Raise Hand.
No, their hands raised?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the claims for the Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant for COVID-19?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to Monroe County Restricted Addresses Policy.
Yes, or second.
We have a motion and a second and an early vote. Mr. Cockrell?
Well, I'm glad that that happened. This is something that's found in state code where we have, because we as a county have the GIS system, which pushes people's addresses onto the internet. State code allows, under certain circumstances, for us to restrict that. We need a policy in place to do that. This policy would put that burden on the Auditor's Office. I worked with the Auditor's Office in creating this policy. Essentially, any of the qualified people would have to submit an application to the Auditor's Office. They would go through some verification process, and that would be what happens when it gets removed. I will note that we seem to be seeing an uptick in these requests, which is kind of why it's been brought to you today.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Is, do you have any sense of why there's an uptick in these requests?
I think, I don't have a real sense, but if I were to guess, I would say it's because a lot of these people are working from home, and therefore, they are thinking about these kind of issues much more frequently than they would have been if they were going into the office every day.
Makes sense.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, just for the sake of the public, would you explain who is covered by this policy?
A judge, a law enforcement officer, a victim of domestic violence, a public official, the surviving spouse of a law enforcement officer, if that person was killed in the line of duty, and an employee of the Department of Child Services. Again, each one of those have a specific statutory definitions, which is found in the policy.
Thank you.
All right. And we addressed this in sort of a piecemeal manner in the past, so it's really nice to have a very specific place for folks to go and to protect themselves. It's really important. So I'm assuming and hopeful that the Auditor's Office will have that on their website soon, that document, that form linked on their website soon. So please go to the Auditor's Office, co-monroe.in.us. If you don't see the form there, give them a call or send them an email, and I'm sure they will get right back with you. This is an important part of negotiating that line between transparency and public safety. So with that, let's see if there is anyone who wishes to offer public comment on this item.
No hands raised?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Monroe County Restricted Addresses Policy?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Second time, yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Oh, I appreciate a little levity on a Wednesday morning. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-01 regarding YSB Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, the Youth Services Bureau is going to replace the bedrolls, also known as mattresses, in the facility, and they need to surplus the old mattresses. These will not be resold. These will be just taken care of through the solid waste process.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Again, please use the Raise Hand feature at the bottom of the screen.
No hands raised?
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2021-01?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-02 regarding use of food and beverage funds. Fund name, Food and Beverage Tax County, Fund Number 4932, in the amount of the balance that is currently available, which is $616,071.54.
Second. Right. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is a request to the Food and Beverage Advisory Commission for a recommendation to use food and beverage tax funds for the purpose of supporting the Convention Center, both with the debt payments and the Convention Center Management Contract expenses. As you know, these expenses have historically been paid through innkeeper's tax, but due to COVID-19, less people are staying in hotels and less collection of income tax. This would go to the Food and Beverage Advisory Commission. If they do recommend the use, these funds are appropriate for that use. It would still have to go to the county council for appropriation. I think, currently, I think the Convention Center has not held a lot of conventions, but they are doing a lot of things such as our blood drives and some of the vaccine sites that we're working with them on. So it's still a valuable part of our community. This is just to help fund the the debt service and the management contract. Just for the record, we have a debt service payment of $159,000 every quarter. And so they've been paying that using their savings, but that savings is running a little low right now.
Right. Thank you so much for the great explanation. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on how great the Convention Center has been to work with to facilitate these various different projects under the leadership of Talisha Kopic. They've really been marvelous for the county.
Right. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, and in the statement that we have, it includes surrounding campus. Does that mean that we can do some rent forgiveness to some of the entities that are there?
I think we can do that rent forgiveness irregardless of this. I use the surrounding campus because the debt is not solely on the center itself. It's also on the surrounding property. So I wanted to make sure that was specific in the request that that debt payment would be for that. How that management with the tenants is a separate question that can be handled independently.
Right. Thank you. And both Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Giffens raised great points about how wonderful it's been to work with the CDC, the Convention Center folks, management folks, just throughout this whole pandemic. They've been wonderful to work with, and it would really be helpful for us to have that, to give them that opportunity to have a little breathing space just to make sure that the debt payments are kept up with, and the management contract can be continued, because they're doing great work for the community, as they should. And so thank you to them and the CDC members. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised?
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2021-02?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
To approve the ratification of the Lambert Consulting Agreement. Fund name, Care Safety Awareness, and this is the anticipated fund. Fund number is to be established, and in the amount of $120,000 is what's expected.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Purdy?
Yeah, good morning. I was trying to figure out why my video wasn't showing. With this particular agreement, the county received notice in November of additional funds that were going to be available from the state to support public awareness, education, and compliance with both state and local restrictions that are specific to COVID-19. We reached out to Mr. Lambert and his team, and they have put together a proposal for six short animated videos that will be shown on, it's actually a customized TV media distribution. So they picked specific we call them, specific providers, like BET for one, the History Channel. They picked particular ones to hit particular classes of age of of our community. And the intention is that this information will reach the majority of our community as possible by doing this. And it will also be released on your Facebook page. We have submitted this to the state to request reimbursement for it. We have not heard anything at this point in time, as this is part of the CARES additional safety funding.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Purdy. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No. Will we also be able to put this up on like the, because it's so related to health, will we also be able to put links up on like the county's health website and things like that?
I would presume that, yeah, that we'll be able to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, this was funding that came from the state sort of out of the blue, and it was very specific requirements about how it could be utilized. And we've met all of those requirements with this, but we're clearly not going to enact the contract unless we hear back from the state that they are going to fund this, correct?
That is entirely up to you, actually. You could use this, if the state doesn't fund it, you could still use what we have available from our CARES funding, if it seemed appropriate for our community. So we have a backup plan.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Please go to the bottom of the Zoom page and click on Raise Hand.
There are no hands raised?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the ratification of the Lambert Consulting Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's look at the next item, please.
I'm sorry, I just lost my agenda. My computer is having a horrible time opening it up again.
Okay, I'll go on to, I'll go ahead and make a motion on item K. This is a motion to approve an in-depth agreement for project coordination for the Smith Pike-Woodyard Road-Curry Pike Intersection Improvement. Fund name, West Side Economic Development Area, Fund Number 4920, in the amount of $2,608,187.80.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning again. So we originally had, this project is in our West Side TIF, and that's where the funds are to build this, redo this intersection. It's basically a dog bone intersection. We've completed right-of-way at this point, finishing up the utility plans. There's been a lot of projects moving out due to the pandemic. So we originally had just approximately $511,782 allocated to this project from MPO Funding, which is a fund that's distributed between Rural Transit, City of Bloomington, Town of Ellisville, so you compete for those projects. When I became aware that When I became aware that there might be some funding kind of left on the table for this fiscal year, I reached out. So NDOT has added $885,981 to this project for the construction. The project was going to be let in February of 2021, but waiting on from some utility work plans, it's been moved to April of 2021. And then we would be construction after that. So this is just, and this is an adjustment to that project to add that additional funding for construction.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm really excited to see this getting underway. That's been a very difficult intersection for years and years.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I, when I was reading through all this, I noticed that the original agreement was signed in September of 2017. So these really do take a good while to put into place.
Actually, that one moved pretty fast.
I was gonna say, this is a bit of a fast track.
Yeah, five years. That's really good, considering I have one project that I began, or it began in, I think the oldest project right now is 2009. So.
Wow. Yeah, it's a lot to track and.
This one stayed on track, so it was really good.
Yeah. And I just want to thank Ms. Ridge and her staff for jumping on this opportunity to get some more money from the state. NDOT knows that we have an amazing team here on the Highway Public Works and that there is, that if there is a project to get going, we'll get it done and we'll meet our deadlines. It's unfortunate. It sounds like we have utility issues again, which really plagued the Fullerton project. And that is really too bad. Let's hope that they will get back on track utility-wise. There's really no excuse for holding up public projects from the utility companies. So I'll just say that. So thank you for seeing this opportunity and making it happen. That's all due to your vast experience and connections with the, with the state and successful project completion in the past. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Looks like there is. Mr. Shelton?
Hi, I'm back. I want to, of course, the chamber, and I'm a member of the RDC, so it worries about that TIF. We certainly encourage you to approve this. And then I just want to echo Ms. Thomas's enthusiastic kudos to Ms. Ridge and her staff. She stays on top of things, but probably more importantly, she's got an excellent relationship based on her historical interactions with NDOT. And that combined with the fact, as Commissioner Thomas said, we can discount each through Ms. Ridge and her staff, Paul and others, can execute these. So this will be another thing that will greatly, well, as Commissioner Jones says, this will greatly improve a just god-awful intersection. I didn't ever know about it until I started as a cost and started having meetings at villages and having to go through that. But it will also improve the TIF and the ability to attract business development out there. Just combined with the, the extension of Profile Parkway, which is, well, will be open as soon as the asphalt plants open again, pretty much in the spring. And then the connector from the Wellness Way out at the West Side Y down into Daniel's Way, and then out to Hart Street Road. It really opens up a lot of land out there that can be developed with, and help with the tip. So again, please prove it and congratulations to Ms. Ridge and her staff and to you guys for supporting her and having her there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. It looks like we have another commenter. Oh, Councilor Hawk. Good morning.
Okay, can you hear me now? I just wanted to say a big kudos to our Highway Department. Thank you, Lisa Ridge. And for everybody who has worked on this as somebody who fights this mess over here constantly. That is a horrible intersection. You can't even tell when it's time to turn to your right because it's just a mess. So I am so grateful. It's amazing what we are able to do when we get the, when we're prepared to get some of that money that the state might have that other people have not been ready for. So then we can get in on some of that money. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Hawk. See if there's.
It's not mine.
Bed X is here.
Oh, it's not mine. They just went through that.
My dog isn't that big.
I don't have a puppy anymore, so it is not mine.
Marty. All right, let's see if there's any other public comment on this item.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. We all had a nice little break there. And my ears are still ringing. And let's see. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve the in-dot agreement for Smith Pike-Woodyard-Curry Intersection Improvement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve, and this is a very interesting name. I'm going to try IXOYE. Trail and Greenways Engineering, Inc. Supplemental. Fund name: Cumulative Cap/Alternative Transportation. Fund number: 1138. In the amount of $1,500.
Second, we have a motion and we have a second Ms. Ridge.
So this supplemental is just actually to include the additional Rule 5 permit processing that was omitted from the original agreement at the cost of $1,500.
Great. Thank you so much. Did you want to tell us how to pronounce that?
I X O Y E.
It really is just the letters. It is just the letters.
That's what I call it.
It works. All right, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I thought Commissioner Jones did a great job pronouncing that.
That's right, too. Yeah. All right. So things are moving as they're supposed to be on this project, Ms. Ridge?
So we, the letting for this project right now is in May. We have begun notifying the property owners for right-of-way acquisition, which for each parcel, it's very minimal. There believe is 26 parcels, but we're not taking a lot of property. It's basically just widening the shoulders and such and drainage work. So that's the process we think have begun, and we've applied for the other permits. And again, working to get the utility plans in. So that's kind of why this has been moved to the May letting versus the April letting. We really want to keep this one on track because the May, you can't move it out past May because they run on a fiscal year. And otherwise, that's going to move it, the construction of that out a little farther. So we are working diligently to work with property owners and get those offers back in and any negotiations that need to take place.
Great.
And this is a project that's been around since 2009.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just hit the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen.
There are no hands raised.
Great. And my dog, Ali, is no longer offering public comment, which is good. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the I X O Y E Trail and Greenways Engineering Supplemental, number five?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item.
Move to approve CHA, or maybe CHA, Consulting, Inc. Supplemental, number two. Fund name: Cumulative Bridge. Fund number.
1135.
Can you finish this? Something just popped up.
Yep. Fund number 1135 in the amount of $10,800. Second. Right. We have a motion and we have a second Ms. Ridge again, please.
This is for our existing project we've had in our Cume Bridge program. It's to replace a culvert that's on Lori Lane, which is basically a subdivision that has one way in, one way out. It's been a little bit more, more in-depth of trying to figure out the best way to do this project to make sure people have access to their homes and such. We are including two additional parcels into the project limits so that we can utilize what's out there to the best of ability to get everybody in and out, emergency services and things like that for the culvert replacement.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
And I will just say it's good that this project is continuing to get done. It's been a long time. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on Raise Hand at the bottom of the screen.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on CHA Consulting Supplemental, number two?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you. And Commissioner Jones, can you do the next?
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Move to approve in-dot agreement for Community Crossing Matching Grant Program. Fund name: Motor Vehicle Highway. Fund number: 1176. In the amount of $1,233,658.40.
Second, we have a motion and we have a second Ms. Ridge.
So this is, I think, what Penny had mentioned earlier about the last call for projects for community crossings. This is what was awarded in December. So this is to get the contract going so we can get it out to bid, so we can get the roads paved this year. So the actual grant award amount was $616,829.20, and then we provide our 50/50 match. The roads that were included in that submittal was Corey Lane from Second Street to Third Street, Ratliff Road from Thomas Road to Hart Street Road, Anderson Road from Shiloh Road to Low Gap Road, and Old 37 North from Chambers Pike to Anderson Road. The total mileage of the projects is 8.198 miles in length. We actually have put the bids out, so we expect to get those at the end of the month. And the crews have already started to do ditching work, schedule culvert replacements to have everything in place before we put down the new asphalt.
Great, great, great work. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
That's amazing that you got the grant in December and you're already moving forward. That is, wow.
Well, I don't know. Forget it. I'm pretty, it's pretty bad. I probably am probably a little anal on some of that stuff, but it's the only way I can keep up.
It's the only way to be, apparently, because it makes you successful. We need a little, I think we need a little monument outside the highway offices of spinning plates that just constantly spin, but there's always more plates.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're always into something. Isn't that the truth?
Absolutely. And it's great. These are great projects. And it's amazing to look at the number of miles, which is dozen, I'm just short of nine miles. It doesn't look like much. But then how much it costs to pave, to do a full paving project on not very, not very much roadway. But that may help give our residents some perspective on why we don't just repave the whole county every year.
Yeah, absolutely. When you see the numbers, and actually when this is a 50/50, I mean, you're looking at a $1.2 million project, and we have about a $1 million by two minutes, you know, fund. So we'll be coming in, I know we're planning on coming, going to the council for an additional, for our local match on that from what we've carried over in the years. But it is amazing what it costs. And, and we're trying to do it to where we're staying ahead of the game a little bit, making, and getting a little bit more longevity out of the roadway by doing the drainage, by doing the ditching, doing a little bit more full-depth patching in areas that's needed. So that way we can get, you know, 10 years out of a road versus maybe three to five years out of a road. But then it costs a little bit more. So it's really hard, I know, for the public to explain. I wish we could pave year-round. I wish we had unlimited funds to go and pave, but it doesn't work that way. And then we have to use our pavement asset management plan to be able to prioritize these roads. We do get calls continuously that, you know, everyone believes the road is the worst in the county. I totally understand. But we have to use like a grading system that was set by the state in Indiana Code for our pavement management, management sys, asset management plan that we are required to submit every December and the rating of our roads. That's what keeps us getting our funding for roadway. So.
Absolutely. And then throw bridges on top of that, and you have an even greater demand for, against funding. Any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Right. And I, and I would be amiss if I didn't say again that it's amazing that you've received, you've put together successful community crossing matching grant program applications continuously. I don't think you've missed a one. And we appreciate that. That's done a lot for our community, and we're all grateful.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the in-dot agreement for Community Crossing Matching Grant Program?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. We do have some appointments to make today. We have a list of nominations. This is not the entirety of the Boarding Commission's positions that are up for appointment or reappointment. This is a partial list because it is quite long. And would one of you wish to make the, as one motion? Make a nomination? Do I read all the names and the appointments? Okay. I wish to nominate the following individuals for the following board or commission, and I'll state their length of term. For the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission, these are two-year terms set to expire the end of December 2022. The individuals are Deborah Myerson, Box Booker, William Hosea, David Henry, Doris Sims, and Chris Cockrum. For the Americans with Disabilities Committee, which is a three-year term set to expire at the end of 2024, Ms. Angie Purdy. Or the Aviation Board, which is a four-year term to expire at the end of, this says 2024, if that's correct. Patrick Murphy. The Board of Health, four-year term set to expire the end of 2024 also. Stephen Pritchard, DDS. To Child Protection Team, one-year term to expire at the end of 2021, I think. On here, it says 2022, but it should be 2021. Angie Purdy. The Convention and Visitors Commission, one-year term set to expire at the end of 2021. Mike Campbell and Tony Satilli. The Emergency Management Advisory Council, two-year terms expiring at the end of 2022. Lee Jones, James R. Davis, Tommy Goodwin, Christopher Wheeler, and John Adams. Additionally, Kenneth Long, Penny Cottle, and Tony Myers. To the County Human Rights Commission, two-year term set to expire at the end of 2022. Doris Parlet, William Smith III.
William Smith III, Susan Gray, and Kathleen Sedeli. The Internal Control Oversight Committee, one-year term set to expire at the end of 2021, Angie Purdy and Jeff Cockrell. To the Licensing Board, four-year term set to expire at the end of 2025, May Cassidy. And to the Parks Access to, Access to Recreation Endowment Advisory Committee, four-year term set to expire at the end of 2025, Marcus Whitehead and Margie Rice. Did I get everybody?
We, you did. We have a motion. And a second. Um, I will note that some of these, um, are January 1st, 2025, uh, expirations, which is essentially the end of 2024. Um, and that includes May Cassidy, uh, Marcus Whitehead, and, uh, Margie Rice, the last couple. Uh, but we're right on, we're right on target in terms of the, the term, the term length, so we're spot on. Thank you for doing all of that, reading through all of that. Um, and we will have some more next week. Uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the appointments?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes, and I want to thank all these people for being willing to serve. They, they provide a great service to our county.
They really do. We thank them for sharing their experience, expertise, wisdom, um, and their time, uh, to make Monroe County better. It's really important, important work. So thank you from all of us, uh, for that help. Um, so with that, um, just have a few quick announcements. As you have, uh, seen today, we, um, are now at $459,901.51 in CARES support for social service organizations, businesses, and taxing units in the community. If you are a business or social service organization in the community, you have COVID-related expenses that are non-payroll expenses that have not been covered by other funding mechanisms. Please go to co.monroe.in.us and, uh, submit, uh, your application as soon as possible. Um, and, uh, in addition, uh, we have, uh, just before, uh, we took our holiday break from meetings, we are at $100,000 in township assistance funding, and that funding goes directly to residents of Monroe County. Every resident of Monroe County lives in a township. If you are struggling, uh, to keep the roof over your head, to pay utilities, to pay for necessities of life, please contact your township trustee as soon as possible. There is funding available. And with both of these, um, uh, funding projects, uh, they're both, uh, coming from federal CARES money that came through the state, but also, uh, we're really pleased and proud to work with the council to make both of these, um, uh, funding mechanisms possible for our community. We'll get through COVID. We will get there. Um, so if you do need assistance, please contact your township trustee. I don't have any other announcements. I want to see if my colleagues do. No?
I don't.
Um, I, I'd like to just make one quick comment. Um, one of the reports that we got was from, uh, Scott Sauter in our Ways and Measures, uh, department. He operates as a, a single person in that department and through COVID, he's faced a lot, a lot of, of problems in trying to get his job done, and yet he's done it. And I just want to commend him. Uh, he's just one of many, many county employees who've gone above and beyond throughout this, this pandemic. And, um, it's a real pleasure to work with people like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, um, glad you said that. There are, uh, there's so many, um, people who have really, uh, who work for Monroe County have really demonstrated they're caring and concerned for our community and the, they truly, they, um, do serve the community every day and COVID has made that job tougher, more difficult. They face obstacles that we couldn't imagine, um, and yet they've made it happen. So, uh, you, you brought up a great example on this charter. Thank you. Excellent. Um, anything else? Or announcements or other? Information. Uh, our next meeting is on the, uh, 13th of January. Um, and with that, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be well.